Almost.
Okay.
Alright.
I make a motion that we start these, this meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
Alright. Meeting is open. First on the night here is Chris and Alex.
This is Alex.
Oh, the New Dale.
Dale's. Yeah, it's New Dale.
I know.
Um, yeah, uh, in Monmouth tonight, so a little double booked on some tag board meetings, but um.
What'd you, what'd you bring for us tonight?
So appreciate you guys, uh, you know, having us in here again. Um, is this a public hearing? Are you guys here to talk about the project or?
No.
No.
Okay, gotcha. So, um, I think, let's start with a project on Rebecca Carson's lot. That was the one where we had some boundary line questions from the abutters to the north. So the packet that you have in front of you now is new information on that project. The other one on McCullough's land, no change, so that application is kind of as is. So the issue that we, we all figured out from the Freedus family and the Sewalls, um, was that this northern boundary line up here, something funny was going on. And we had surveyed like almost up here and we hung flags and we thought our project area was there because the, tax maps showed it that way. So, uh, at the last meeting, the boundary survey was underway. We now have that complete and it's a stamped plan for Rebecca Carson's lot. And so, um, yeah, we, as, as everybody was talking about, this area does not belong to Rebecca anymore. Well, it never did. So, um, so this is her house right here. And I've got another phone board for the, the project map. We wanted to start with this one. If you look on, go to that, maybe go to the boundary survey on your handout. So you can see there's two lines on the northern end edge of this. There is, there is some discrepancies, um, in the deed research that we did, or that actually Owen asked with it. But we are very confident that this southern line is actually the line. So what that means is that the Freedus family to the north, and then amidst kind of two Freedus lots here, as well as the Sewalls, technically they got a little bit more land because of this. So, but I don't know who this, this, this triangle belongs to, and that's not really our concern either. So the deed research only focused on Rebecca Carson's land. So what we did in our design is we designed to this lower line, just to be safe. And that should be something that the Freeduses can, you know, they may need to do like a boundary agreement, just to clarify this about where those pins are, that would get filed with a registry of deeds, but either way, we're definitely staying off of any disputed area with the project layout. So this red line, if you go back to the first page in your packet, the red line is the surveyed boundary line. And what that meant was rearranging some of the, the solar panels that were originally up in the woods here in the Freedus and the Sewell property, pushing them down, kind of doing some rearranging. But it, it doesn't look drastically different. If you kind of recall, what we've talked about to date, um, it's just been some shifting now. So we're pretty comfortable now with, with having the right site control and layout of these, uh, of this equipment on Rebecca's property. We're still maintaining a, you know, pretty healthy distance of trees here to the abutters to the south. I guess that's the, uh, the grinders, Ruth and Gary, or Greenyang. So, you know, we've still got, uh, all these wetlands in here and trees. The green is, is just what's getting cut. So all the, anything that's not shaded in green is gonna remain trees.
Did the location of the road change a little bit too, Chris, or something?
Um, from the entrance?
Yeah. Way it cut across the property.
Probably, well, probably not a lot because that wetland was right here was really guiding the location of that. So the entrance is existing. Maybe it might have shifted, like maybe there was a bend a little bit before.
Okay.
But I think that the distance from where the first solar panels start to the road didn't really change all that much. So it's still gonna be the kind of thing, if you're driving on West Lebanon Road on this project, I don't think you'll know what's back there. And I don't think these folks here to the, the south will, will be able to see it much at all.
Any questions?
Yep.
No.
No?
No questions.
Big sense.
Okay, great.
Out of the official package?
This is yours. Yeah, please, please take it. Um, I sent Jen digital copies of it. So these are all like stamped proof plans. It's what we're rolling forward with, what do we, um, get for everything else.
Good huh? Alright, you're good?
Yeah, and then the other, the other project just said, right? Just a reminder. Unchanged here. Whoa, it's through the other way. Goodness gracious. Yeah, so no, no changes here. I did share the boundary survey with Daniel Sewell, who was in attendance at the last public hearing, spoke to him on the phone, and just like kind of walked through our process a little bit, cause he was, you know, he has a vested interest in making sure his land is intact. So we've done, um, some outreach to him. I don't have the contact info for the Freedus family, but I'd be happy to share it with them. If they do contact you and you could say, yeah, Chris, Chris can share this, or this is publicly available now, so I guess you guys could also share it. But we're more than welcome to, to share the stamped survey plans, um, so people have an understanding of it. So, uh, I also shared with him the, the boundary survey for the McCulloughs project. He owns land like up here, uh, in two different abutting lots and so he was good with it, didn't have any issues. No, no major updates here. Do you guys have any questions about the McCulloughs project? Last time.
No, I don't think so. This was, one was straightforward, really.
Yeah, pretty, pretty much, yep. Just a little bit of tree clearing here on this one, but not, not a lot.
Are they so, both looking for next spring or?
Yep, still, still on track for, for that.
I think we're, this time we're good and we know what you got.
Okay, great.
Thank you for the update.
Okay. What, what's next with you guys?
Do we have a full package on there? Is everything spinned in there? So we have to, I guess with that point, we're gonna review each one of them, right? Treat them as complete and review them and come up with any final questions for you?
Okay.
So, I don't know how to handle that one.
I think that, let's get through some of these agenda items and maybe in other business we can start going through that.
Yeah, maybe we'll take them into the next one if we, and get Jen, if we get a list of questions for you, we'll just then send them to you.
We'll try to look at it after we get through some of these, we have a pretty hefty agenda.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so she wants to hang around and then we can talk later, just to get through that.
You don't have to hang around if you want. We'll just send you a list of,
Yeah, we'll review it.
questions or concerns that we might have.
Oh, I see. Okay, gotcha. Uh, we were thinking there would be, there would be a vote tonight. Is that, am I incorrect in assuming that?
Uh, that's potential, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta go, yeah, we gotta put everything together, right, and look at each of them and. We didn't have it on the schedule for that, but let's, uh, we've got quite a big schedule here to work with.
Okay, we'll.
I mean, you're more than welcome to hang along, let's, let's see where we end up.
We'll wait, we'll wait. We'll let you get through it, okay.
Alright. So next up is gonna be Dana from the Drapos.
Could we have some small ones or not? We're just signing the big ones, is that? Or we just sign in my last? I guess they don't need my last.
My last any? Uh, they, they record the paper copy and that's it.
Cause they scan them immediately when they take them in? This one, Sarah, this was the one I wasn't fully involved with, right? This was the one I missed and then we moved it back and readjusted.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Are you signing or no?
Yeah, I mean, I think I can sign.
I think you can too, cause you were there for a good majority of that.
Yeah, I do.
Should have gone here earlier.
Yeah. So we ended up here, right? This was the one we had the question on what we could do height wise, right?
This is straight bow, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
This is probably the best choice now.
No, I think we're good, Andy, we're good.
Okay, alright, we're gonna sign this one. We have the erosion control and the revegetation. They're all on this.
That should be on the plan because they have a little different greens, colors are different.
Yeah, right, yeah, and we have, and it's got the notes like we asked, right, yeah.
Yep, tree removal right there.
Alright. I forgot to sign them all, don't I? Um, we need to sign at least two copies of me. Oh, here's two copies, here you go, there you go. Good carbon. I think we need Jen. Sign them all?
Just sign them.
Alright.
That's how fussy they are.
We used to have to sign them in black, I think, but with the, they record, they record these telephones. A lot of people want them in blue now, right, so they can tell the difference between a copy and an original?
New carbon machine, you could sign something and put it through and it wouldn't be able to tell.
Tell whatever went on.
So the, the project, we don't ask them that it reports, so.
Is it not live streaming?
But it's being recorded.
Okay.
But they can hear us if they can't see us.
We got two lefties? Are you a lefty? You're a left, are you a lefty?
Mm-hmm, yeah, look at that. Well, good, see? It's not sad to only recruit lefties.
Yeah, so you go on the videos and then they put it out.
A ton.
Well, we stick it on the added line. Hello, love you.
Two of those back, one, uh, you, you gonna want a, a copy Jen for the recording information?
Yes, please.
There you go. There. I'm gonna do it again.
We can have, um, four recording copies. Can we run a half, that would be lovely.
How many?
Four.
Four.
Cause we need to do more my last, I'm sure you need to do more of them.
Almost there. Let's sign them all.
Yep, not quite.
You don't have to do all the other ones.
You don't have to do all the other ones?
Cause how many of them are there?
Take them.
I only need two of those back.
Four.
Take two.
Is there a rubber band to go with that?
Yeah, we did have one somewhere maybe.
Where is it?
Somewhere maybe.
There's, uh, there's no bag.
Got a bag?
I bought a bag.
You pulled it in here?
Is there another one?
Yeah, hang on, Sarah.
Around the last one also.
With that?
Around the last one also.
One down. You're not gonna get up and get away and we call you again? Alright. Alright, so that takes care of three of them. Now we have Dana again.
That was, yeah, three of them, so.
Yeah, we got Dana again. Mr. Estes, Mr. Estes. This one feels like it's been going on a while. This was back in the Zoom days, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that, he kinda changed his mind about what he was doing. Now we got the sign-ins blocked here on this one.
Do you want me to get you a chair?
There's one right here.
That one you can keep, you can keep the R records, Jen?
I'm sorry?
You can keep that one for the record.
My last, my pen is. Skippy.
Cause you guys had mentioned the sidewalk was done before my time, so you didn't want me to.
Are you sure?
Positive.
Anyway, you're back, right?
Yeah.
We did stat that.
Yeah, this sidewalk's a little, way back in the time.
Yeah, this was, I probably know the site just as well, cause I sold it to him. So I do.
I don't know, did you guys ever sit walk solar for solar projects?
We didn't have access.
Just, just do the four, I don't do all.
Yeah. So I'm gonna do four this time? My last plus four?
I have my last, so there's three, three, so that would be.
There's three, right?
My last, and it's from decay and stuff like that.
It's more durable.
Yeah.
That's why we're supposed to use permanent.
Did Jen, three, three papers and one my last? Yeah, three paper and one my last, all you need?
Get a name there for a minute?
Right as block.
I'm so famous, I forgot who it was.
She was, people signed for it.
Auto pen, yeah.
You good with Mr. Dana? You want these originals back or?
You don't, you guys don't want it for your record?
Genuine, you don't, that's all you want is the two sign?
The sign one's out, I think the little one's though.
Okay. What do you got going on here then? Actually, I've never done this job.
I mean, it's not gonna be such a great idea.
Would you like a different one?
No.
Alright, we'll do that one. Estes is done. Alright, we're back to Dana again. Alright, Brook Hill Estates.
So quick question about subdivision names. Jen emailed us a, a listing of names that you already have. And my question is, is why is it that you can't have some, have something that's similar?
We don't know, we don't agree with it either.
I just asked her the same question tonight.
I can understand road names and all that, but not the subdivision names.
Alright, that's what they, they were just saying, so.
Um, because we don't actually reference anything by the subdivision names, so I don't think it matters either if we have like five subdivisions that start with pine.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Um.
You're gonna run out of names?
Well, we actually had this conversation at the sidewalk because we, we were told you've gone through like five names for this one. So, is this?
This is only the second one.
Was this available?
Yeah, we're gonna use Brook Hill. Originally it was Pinecone State or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we used Brook Hill.
Yeah, that was the first we heard of it too.
Yeah.
The subdivision, we, we asked the same thing.
We had the same question.
Okay, alright, so we're, we're good with the name?
Sure.
Okay, Jen says we are.
That's me, it's up to you guys.
I don't, I don't.
I'm good, right? You okay with the bed? Alright.
I'll do anything I need to do. So Dana, there was just a couple of things, you weren't here for the last couple of names, so we got that driveway moved on, um, lot one, which is fine. But when we went to the sidewalk, we were discussing, um, like we did on the west side property on Heath Road, the drainage and the site distance.
Yep.
You gonna work on that, Chris?
Right, we're gonna be, we're gonna be doing all the site distances for the driveway.
Okay.
And, and part of the requirement is, uh, I don't even know, it might be already on here for a note, but as far as the culverts are concerned.
Maybe we're asking those questions and he, he can answer questions at the sidewalk, he wasn't sure.
Yep, yeah, we had no 19, there were talks about culverts under the driveway and all that stuff.
And we were a little concerned about the road runoff in these areas, not, just not knowing how the lots are gonna look. Right now it looks like all the road runoff is heading into the lots.
Okay.
And just wonder where it's gonna go once you.
Right, so on this particular subdivision, we may need to get an engineer involved, at least to look at that. And deal with, deal with the few, the lots along the road here and how, how the drainage is gonna affect. Cause obviously you don't want something to DM up the drainage from off the road, so.
Right, yeah. I mean, the lots are good, but it just seems like everything sheeted off cleanly off the road at this time. So that was one question we had. What else we have for her?
That was really all we talked about.
Yeah, the driveway entrances.
It was just driveway on lot one, which we got moved, that was my biggest.
Lot three to get moved.
Oh, you're right, lot three, the one on the corner.
Yep.
Um, that got moved, so that's better now.
Yeah, and the same thing with on this road was the drainage and the site distances, right?
Well, this road has more ditching on the side, so I'm sure they'll put like culverts under, but it's all gonna kind of go here. I just know that drainage is an issue on this road as a whole. As this road, this hill, Poplar Hill, this end becomes a sheet of ice in the winter. We've had the road commissioner out there with ice chippers chipping away.
On Poplar Hill Road?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I would just caution about.
Recently?
Every winter.
Okay.
So they've replaced our culvert at the bottom of the road, but the water just shears across the street. So I would just probably wanna see some.
So the water's coming down Poplar Hill Road and into the intersection, is that what, is that what's happening?
Yeah, it's kind of.
It was a culvert.
Right across from Bullis, it's kind of like all in front of Bullis right here in the corner.
Uh-huh.
And it just kind of shears right across the road like that.
Is that because there's no lift there?
Yeah.
It was a culvert, but it had a weird angle to it, almost like the water probably could miss it or build up before it could collect into it.
Okay.
It might be undersized for what's there or.
But once again, I mean, we, we, you know, I mean, we, we can have an engineer take a look at that, to see what effects might be.
And it may be some better ditching there and, you know, is that a real hard angle and everything kind of collected in one spot, it looked like.
So what's the history you've done with this intersection as far as flooding?
Well, that's it. Just in the winter, that, that water comes through and it's freezing.
So this culvert that, that's going under the road, the thirty-three inch culvert?
The one that's crossing Schoolhouse right here, that was replaced last year.
Okay.
But we still had an ice issue because they're replacing this culvert, which is great. But the water's coming from this corner here, across the street, and that's what's freezing.
Okay. Once again, ditching to take care of that, right?
Yeah.
Unless the road, I have to take a look at it, the road might be super elevated, so that anything that lands on the road is going that way already. Doesn't have a real crown to it.
Possible, but that's just, that was my biggest thing, that and the driveway, so hopefully it's taken care of, I think. I don't have too many questions.
Yeah. Rest of it looked pretty good. The lots look good. David said everything marked out, it was easy to see.
Yeah, I heard you guys liked what he did.
Yeah.
I'll make sure that he does all the sidewalks.
He made, he made quite a few tracks.
He marked it out really well, the driveways a lot, yeah, it was great.
He just wants us to get him out of the road by dark.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of tough now.
Yeah.
So that, we didn't have much else to do.
I think that was it, just to make sure we did the, um, site distances, the drainage and that driveway, which that was my only three.
So we're, we're, we also are gonna be asking for some waivers.
Yeah, we saw that.
Okay.
And those were all waived for the abutting subdivision, so I personally don't have a problem with it.
Okay, we did talk about that.
Alright.
Everything else was clear. Very similar to what you did on Heath Road.
Yep.
It was very clear and easy to understand. Do you have anything else, David?
No, I didn't.
You over there?
No.
I know Betty missed that one.
I did.
Do you have any questions on the mast?
So once again, there's a lot more information in the, on these plans that that needs to be on there, but this is just sketch, so if, if you're good with the plan itself or the layout, then we're gonna go to the next, next level. I'll have the soil guy go in, do all the, the soil testing and have an engineer look through roads.
I think we're good, right? Please, this is a good one, we're, we're right on the town road again.
Alright.
I think we're ready, right?
I'm good, yeah, he can move forward.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Alright. You want to move anymore?
No, I think I'm, I'm with it tonight.
Alright.
I'll be back in a few weeks, so.
Oh, good, don't wait to see it.
See you later. Goodnight.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dana.
Thank you. Thank you.
Free for Dana. Alright. John Hutchins, that one? Did we get a name?
No, he's here.
Oh, there's some people outside there, I don't know.
That's the heat that's up there.
Oh. Hutchins here, Jen?
I don't think he's here.
He's not?
No.
Moving on, we can circle that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, over.
Alright, Dan and Brenda here, are they here?
Yeah.
Wow, yeah. Going up.
Could I take a look at the Hutchins one? That's why I mentioned, that's why.
Yes.
Thank you all, it's on, Jen. There you go, that's on the front of the list.
No, so.
We kinda, we kinda need these in this, so. We're just trying to.
Gotta give one to the boss.
That's the one we went down.
One to the assistant boss.
Apparently, this plan, that they use the.
Maybe we'll give one to Jeff.
I remember that.
Just because.
So.
I do remember that.
Okay, I'll catch everybody at the speed limit on this once everybody's ready.
So, that's the two thousand one, this is the episode, but the only, everything's the same, it's just that before you move the roads and whatever.
Okay, thank you. So. Um, David and Betty, do you remember when we went down to Sunfish Lane to the Dix, it's the Dixon's, right?
Yeah.
My name, yeah.
My name, Trudy.
And we, they wanted to put a foundation under there, whatever, they didn't have a map that had the water levels delineated on that, the flood.
Yeah.
Whatever. When we did that, they used this plan right here, which actually belongs to these people.
Oh.
So, I just need to explain why you're gonna see the same plan tonight, and that's why.
That's why.
Wow, man.
That explains that.
You remembered that, didn't you?
I remembered Sunfish Lane.
I remember walking in the ice in the snow, we can't find it, we couldn't find it in the middle of winter.
We got very, very, very lost.
I, I bet, it is not easy to get.
No.
But, on that, on that note, so, um, we're, we're lot ten. They were lot eight, so we are lot ten, and this is our existing property. Alright, it's, um, it's really, it's two school buses put together with a porch on the front, and that's what, been there for fifty years. And, uh, we've been there for, I don't know, seven, eight, nine, whatever.
Ten years, maybe.
And we're just looking ahead to maybe do something more permanent there, so we, we didn't know, we didn't know where to start. So, we, we had called the septic guy, and he said, well, you need to go to the planning board to let them figure out where you can put the, the house on this property. So. So we're, we are about a hundred and forty feet from the water. Um, and we wanted to, and we have seventy-five feet, so if we put the, the camp right in the middle of this spot right there, approximately the same. The same distance from the water, but be twenty-five feet on each side, is, can we do that? And, um, because, you know, this is our septic system here, this is our well, this is her septic system, this is her well.
This is what we did to show what the difference is.
Their septic system is here, and their well is there. So, um, so we just kind of made, this is the existing, what's, what's there, and then this is what we proposed to do.
Oh, I see.
Just like you, like.
I think I helped you build the bonfire this year.
Oh, yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
So you just wanna move this over while still standing a hundred and forty feet from the water?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's the least.
I don't think many to do, like a site walk and all that stuff, because we're beyond a hundred feet.
It's the, uh, shoreline.
The setback speed map.
I think it's a hundred feet for the, the shoreline. We just don't, we're not quite sure where to begin, so we thought we'd come to you folks and see.
So you didn't get your septic design done yet?
No.
No, they asked us to come here for.
Okay, yeah.
Cause if we. Which district are we in for this? That's gonna be the question, well. Which district are we in, Jen, on this, on the same policy?
Are you looking at?
So, Eva and.
Shoreline zoning map?
Yeah, that's over.
It's a hundred year flood plan, we're supposed to.
So, we're in Reese, so.
That's right.
So that's the resource protection district, so. That way. It's the same.
It can be, well, it's like right on, hold on.
That must be a copy of that.
I think so.
Yeah.
So that's the other question, though, if we follow this. We're in, we're still listening, it's not.
I think we're finding the purpose of that. The purpose on.
I don't even think.
Where are you?
I don't think we might be, like right on the plus minus.
And here's where I'll be right here. Sunfish.
I hear around the.
Right here, so.
Yeah.
It's right there, so I mean, you can.
We'll be there.
What's, uh, square footage of your current building?
About seven hundred square feet, I think.
I still think they're fine, I mean, even if that comes into play, because he thinks that his original structure is about seven hundred square feet, and this proposed twenty-four by thirty-six is only like eight hundred and.
Four, nine hundred, something like that.
So they're well under the fifteen hundred, thirty percent, but, um.
So it's just a matter of how we approve it, though, right?
I would just approve it so that.
Yeah, but twenty-five on each.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't be a public closure to the shoreline. Yeah, we should be fine.
So like, just say as long as they keep the twenty-five foot side setbacks and a hundred and forty feet from.
The shore.
The water.
Yeah. No, I agree, I was just trying to figure out where were you. No, it seems very, very easy, this is an easy one.
From what we usually get.
Right.
What do you think, David?
I think you're right. I think, I think that you're totally fine.
So if we go with the proposed, proposed plan, we can that, in that middle of the lot. And, um, and then, now as far as septic and well, that doesn't impact you, that's the septic design guy's gotta figure out.
From the state, yeah.
Okay.
What do you consider it?
My son's doing it.
Yeah.
Lines doesn't get close to the line, I have no.
Alright. We're just sitting there.
Now, is there any trees being cut or anything you could do? Well, it depends on where, if, if we had to move it, then we'd have to cut some trees, but if we do it where it is.
There's some uncut trees right here.
If we had to move it back or something because of the, the shoreline and stuff, then we would have to cut some trees down.
So if it goes right here, like you presented, no trees need to be cut?
Oh, geez. As, as far as we understand, unless the builder says, hey, cause there's some pine trees like right here.
Or if the septic guy says, oh, we have a septic behind us, cause right now, my septic's in the front, and that might be too close to the water, I don't know.
Okay.
But, so if you have to put it behind us, then maybe some trees behind us will have to get.
And they probably are gonna put it behind you, they, they always try to put it as far away from the pond as possible, so. Yeah, we're gonna be getting over two hundred feet away.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, no problem with that.
Yeah, it looks all good. Nothing we need to see is the erosion control.
And that would be from our builder, or from?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, maybe we're gonna need to see a line along the disturbance, you know, saying self-encephaloscopy.
Okay.
Erosion control.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a height on this one? That's the other question, right? We still gotta follow the heights, right?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet. You have a, do we have a building, you don't have a design plan? This is like, this is preliminary state, yeah, which, what can we do is what we're trying to figure out.
You're at first stop.
Okay.
We're, we're newbies here, we don't.
So you can't exceed twenty-five feet, and what we do is we take the average midpoint of the building. Okay. On these two sides, you know, based from the final grade to the ground. Okay. The building, the ridge cannot exceed twenty-five feet. Okay.
Meanest way?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd give you two stories.
And those lots are all pretty flat there, aren't they, if I remember right? Yeah, it's pretty flat, yeah.
Yeah. Super flat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, yeah, we actually have this big ground line, which is really nice, and we have a lot of bookie law.
So, yeah, I think you just need to, um, do an erosion control plan. You know, come up with house plans that you wanna do, making sure you stay within that twenty-five foot height requirement.
Okay.
You cannot exceed fifteen hundred square feet in that district, because of the distance you are from the water.
Okay.
And you wanna stay at least a hundred and forty feet back from the water.
Okay.
And, uh, revegetation plan, so if you pull out even grass, you need to replant grass and show us a plan that you're gonna re-vegetate any disturbed area. And if you cut down any trees, you need to replace it with a light kind tree.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, very.
Now, even if that, I'm sorry, this is just, even if the, like, behind the camp, those trees would have to be, even though they're.
If you cut them down.
So many people away from the shore.
For the septic design, we have to.
We want to relocate somewhere else on the.
On the property.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on the same spot, and just show us the importance, a similar tree.
Yeah, not the same place.
Okay.
Something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay.
So if you cut a pine, replace it with a pine, change the situation.
Okay, sorry, good.
And if you get that all on a plan, you just bring that back to us, then we can discuss it, and then we can take a vote.
Okay.
And then I, I give somebody a check.
That would be good. Alright, awesome, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing a good package for us.
Somebody need them this back, Jen? That's ours. Yeah, both of them. Yeah, that was why we had our files here.
Alright, perfect.
The files are full.
Alright, appreciate it, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Jen, thank you for your help. You guys have been wonderful.
That was a good one. We have to remove so many problems. They don't really move it.
That's the branch. Step in off the wall.
You're gonna go sit over there, we'll call you, or you just? Sorry, might be presumptuous, that we were actually gonna let you come to the table? Jen already has one, so let's just. I'll try to be brief. Now, you Jeremy?
I don't. I am for Dorothy, I actually sent Jen an invitation already, um, to represent Dorothy on this.
Okay.
Um, I am, uh, this is gonna be very similar to the one we did, or the board did for Karen Abbott a few months ago. Where there was a lot that was not part of a subdivision, but because title companies were concerned about that. Needed the board to basically say, yeah, that's not part of a subdivision, doesn't need to be reviewed by us. So, on the front page here, lot nine E, that was cut out in two thousand four from this much larger parcel. So you see lot nine and lot nine E, so it's in the middle of the lot there. That was deeded away, or deeded in two thousand four in a non-subdivision of the planning board, nothing to do with it. However, later, uh, so I put a copy of the deed in there, you can see that. Two years later, in two thousand six, Lower Village Survey did a subdivision, um, where they did some land not, not related to that nine E. And they failed to draw this in. So, th- they failed to draw that in, this is the two thousand.
Where would it be on the map?
So, you can see where it says trailer?
Do you want the big map?
No.
I'll, I'll just move a little closer and show you. Right here. That's nine, nine E. So, they should have.
I'm gonna give you a paper cut, sorry.
They should have, so it's right here.
You wanna show David?
Yeah, you ready, let me see the little squares.
I have to thank you.
Right there.
Yeah.
Be right there.
So the lot, the lot already existed, the lot was cut off in two thousand four, not subject to the planning board review. But because it wasn't drawn in as sort of an abutting lot, when they did the road subdivisions, when they subdivided this, they were just cutting off a couple lots here, a couple lots there.
Yeah.
Not related to that, but the Lower Village never drew that in. So, not a big deal, it didn't matter, it wouldn't have been affected. But the reason they didn't draw it in is because this subdivision was a correction to clarify Jim Grant Road and Center Road stuff that had been. They sold too many lots without knowing it, so they had to go after the max subdivision. So, long story short, this has been a separate lot that had nothing to do with the planning board, still doesn't. Um, been paying taxes on it, taxed on it for, since two thousand four, sixteen years. But the, there's a title company involved that would like to see that it doesn't fall under the planning board purview. Which was exactly the same thing that happened on the Abbott one.
There's no other lot lines delineated in here, we go. It's like one big square, none of this is delineated unless it's this.
That is, so, well, so when.
Is this a tax map?
This.
Was this a tax, okay, well, that explains that.
Yes, this was. So, this was just numbered lots, four, three, one, two, so it was one, two, three, four.
Okay.
So, this already existed, and he just didn't draw it in, and it should have been drawn in. Since it was, he surveyed it two years after, he didn't think they would have drawn it.
So it says it deeded right away, you go into it?
Yeah.
So what does the title company want us to say?
That the planning board has, doesn't need to act on the fact, on that lot, on lot nine E, map bar eleven.
Was this bill done that you, this is what you asked me about? Oh, okay.
He did the same thing to the Karen Abbott one. A, a, a lot unrelated to subdivision, but, you know what it is, they don't know the main laws.
Yeah, okay.
That's why, that's why we're not going to that, I'm not using them anymore.
Because this is for sale.
Yeah, there's an over aggr, over aggre, over aggressive title attorney that doesn't, isn't really familiar with main law.
Yeah, there's an over aggressive, over aggressive title attorney that doesn't, isn't really familiar with main law that. Thinks everything that's split needs planning board approval and that's not the case. So this would just be a general letter saying that lot owned by Dorothy Herstman, tax map this, lot this. Was, it's not subject to planning board review.
I'm okay with that.
What's that? It is, it is, yeah. And there used to be an old scrapyard on there.
Yeah, it was a big scrapyard.
Yeah, I remember going out there.
Really?
Yeah, they, it's all, all cleaned up now? It was all just like farming and logging equipment and stuff and a bunch of truck, tractor trailers. You looking to see what we did for Karen?
He came with a letter for us to sign.
I would have, I thought it would have needed to be on the.
Happens what in November?
November?
No, no, it wasn't November. That was in March to take, March or April, yeah. Yeah, it was pre-coronavirus. Yeah, it was definitely pre-coronavirus, February, March, somewhere around there.
Pre-coronavirus.
So you could sing that. It's your birthday week. Oh yeah, this is your thirty-ninth week.
It's been a long, it's been a long year.
Do you look any older or?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Still twenty-four?
I've been doubling up on that eye cream.
Mike hasn't been looking for a younger woman yet.
He already has a younger one.
What was the name of that?
That was uh, that was up by the pond there. What was that one?
Yeah, um, Old Milton Mills. I was looking to see if it was Paul and that was not, but I can't tell.
Who was on it?
It's tough to read.
I don't even see David's name on there. That was a long time ago.
Is that Wyman? Nancy, is that Nancy?
I can't tell what that is.
Looks like Wyman.
It's Roxanne.
Roxanne Bumper.
Yeah, that was number one. Look at the fourth one down. That looks like Nancy. No, this year, Jen.
It was somewhere in the January, February, March of this year, twenty twenty. I almost paused it. Is that in oh-six?
Yeah, it is.
Forms. See when you wrote that contract.
I'm looking at it right now, but I, I. Closed March ninth, so we were here. I'm almost positive it was February. I have the letter. You want me to forward it to you, Ken?
Oh, you have it?
Yeah.
Oh, that was Ned Fitzpond.
It said it was a clarification.
In that way, it can just be.
You should have it now. It was March second, I believe. March third it was signed on.
No, he's looking at it.
We'll give him credit, yeah. For a good memory. Good memory in the cell phone.
So I guess you guys just need to.
I think it's really literally probably one sentence that map R eleven lot ninety is, uh, the planning board does not. Require map R eleven ninety to come before the board for approval. Since it was done prior to sub- a subdivision in two thousand six, even though it was left off of the subdivision in two thousand.
Ashley was here. I don't care. Just write up whatever you want. It doesn't have anything to do with that subdivision, so.
It doesn't. Yeah, just rework it to fit that lot, like you said. I'll see you, David. See if you agree. Something that's been approved? What are these thirteen?
This is Emmons Lane.
Oh, oh, that's Emmons Lane. Okay. Looks like it's a lot closer than the.
Yeah, it's a tax map. They, they're terrible. But if you look at the other one, it'll show you all of the.
Yeah, it just goes farther on the tax map. You don't see it on the, that's where I was. You couldn't see it on this map.
So should I bring that to the December meeting or?
Yeah, and then we can sign it.
Move it forward. Sounds good.
We'll vote on it when you. So we'll vote on that footage.
Hopefully she likes you. She won't need to take it home and change it again, right?
Get it right.
Do you know this one?
Get it right the first time.
Alright, next on the agenda, Matthew Hebert. You here? He's coming. Have you signed in yet?
Nope.
Alright, I'll get you to sign in. Sorry, David, I took the job there.
No, that's alright, that's alright.
I just can't hate this map.
Alright, why don't you give us a little overview of what you're looking for here?
Well, I'm looking to rebuild a camp. In Rocky Cove. You have, it's made up copies of the, the building you do. You have the. Basically, what we wanna do is tear down this twenty-six by twenty-six structure. And take out a privy. And put a twenty-six by thirty-six structure back on the same footprint, except for come back ten feet. Not move the building back ten feet, but go back another additional ten feet towards the back of the lot. With a little bit bigger building. And take out the privy, a thousand gallon. Holding tank, septic tank that has a pipe coming out of it to, so it was an old makeshift. Septic system, I guess, a single pipe septic system on the very back of the lot. Um, and remove that shed. Won't be any trees coming down. There'll be a pine tree that might have to come down. And if we do, we wanna put. Avrovites up. On this border here, we wanna put a half dozen or so avrovites here. Um, six to eight feet tall. I don't know what you'd call it, the east border, I guess.
This side?
Yep, the other side. Yep, that side, nope. There's no other trees really that need to, to be coming down in there. And then this. Parking area right here is where the septic's gonna be going up in the back. Will you see that? They call it a building envelope. I guess that's the. That's the only buildable spot, yeah.
That's your septic?
Septic's gonna be going up in there, yeah.
Existing house? Where do you wanna bring this?
I wanna leave it right there and we wanna come back an additional ten feet to the ba- add ten feet to the back.
So you just wanna expand this by ten feet?
Are you intending to demolish what's there and rebuild?
Yeah, we have to. Cause it's an old, it was built with old. Pallets and stuff from like the G D, Somersworth and whatnot. Nothing is.
So.
So like the floors in the, in the kitchen, we almost went through it this summer. It's fifty plus years old. There's no, there's no post underneath it. There's four posts up in the front and that's it for. And then in the back part of it sits in the mud.
Fifty in the blue. Where's the twenty-five?
And nothing, nothing is.
It's not on.
Is salvageable and I mean it's.
Sure. So when we're looking at a demolish and rebuild, it's still the best possible location, not necessarily in the same spot, correct?
We'd like to use it a little bit more too, that we only live thirty-five miles away. So we'd like to use it a little bit more, so. Make it so it's a little bit easier.
Yeah, so we don't have the twenty-five foot setback.
I don't see it. I'm seeing the fifty high water. I'm not seeing the twenty-five. And also I'm missing it. Does anybody see it?
No, that's gonna be pretty long, this one, we're close. Yeah, we don't have another line from.
The fifty foot, it has a fifty foot.
Right, we need, we need the twenty-five marked out too.
Did he not do it because?
Yeah, that's within the twenty-five. Actually, you can see right here. The deck's a twenty-five point five-five.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I didn't see it.
Yeah, and the camp is thirty-one. So the deck is twenty-five five and the camp is thirty-one point six-six. From the high water.
Boy, half an inch, there you go.
Good survey.
Right?
Oh, where's that high watermark?
So what's the overall dimensions gonna be?
Twenty-six by thirty-six. So twenty-six across the water. Yeah, then thirty-six.
Now, the neighboring one is the one we just did, correct?
That's what I was, yeah, it's right here, isn't it?
Is the, no, not that one. It was the one we just signed, the large one for Drapow.
Drapow's your neighbor?
Yeah, and then we, then we've had this one, he and the other side, right?
Reason I ask is, did Dana on this particular one for Hebert? Did he draw where the new, I think he still got where the old house is on the neighboring one. He didn't factor in where we moved the house, right? That's the old house. He didn't factor in where the new one's gonna be.
I think that in relation to this one here.
Yeah, especially since it's.
This is the Drapow house right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he never, he, he should redo this one. In fact, so we can see where the new one's gonna be with the new septic and everything.
And their well and everything, right?
Right?
So you're their family member?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Cause remember you said, hey, that's my whatever, okay.
Yeah. Well, they live in Florida all winter. So come September, they're out of here. They don't come back.
Drapow's mentioned they were thinking about doing it, but they were gonna be the guinea pigs first to see how.
You do have a good memory.
Well, that's good because I don't.
I mean, one thing I see here is this twenty-seven feet tall.
Yeah, that's on the front, on the front elevation. Now, you, you take from the middle of the elevation.
We take the mid.
From there. So I'd have to figure that out because um, I think it's gonna be right around twenty, twenty, twenty-one feet. I use the bigger pitch here. I can go with a smaller pitch.
Oh, okay, yeah. It just catches our eye when it exceeds that twenty-five feet.
Yeah, so that'd be the very front. And I went a little high on that. So yeah, and I used a big pitch on that and I could, I could put the pitch down.
So what it really comes down to though, is we have to do the relocation before we come up on the expansion. So we need to bring the existing structure to the best possible location. And then talk about the expansion aspect of it, cause they're two totally separate issues. And that's just the order that it has to begin. So our goal honestly is to get the original. Square footage, that eight hundred and three square foot structure. Our goal is to get that as far back as possible. So do you know where, I mean, I know you said in this building apron is where they were gonna do your septic. Do you have a septic designer at all?
Yes, I do. Um, Joe Noel did it.
Do you have it with you?
I don't. Um, but I do know it's going back here. So he's gotta come in ten feet and he's got fifteen feet, I believe it was. By ten feet. Because of the, the tank that I'll be putting in. The tank's like three thousand dollars more.
Are you driving on this area? Is that why?
Yeah, and this is a right away for the Drapows to come through and then our parking is back there. And then um, so. Really no other place that that.
Septic would go?
Right. Yeah, because it, we're gonna stay away from the.
Are you keeping this shed?
I'd like to um, put it back here at the, where the privy is.
You wanna move it back here?
Yep, where the privy is. But if, if it's not doable, it's not a deal, deal breaker.
That gets him beyond the hundred.
Here's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see a twenty-five foot line marked out, number one. I'd like to see the well and septic location. For the Drapows marked out on this map. I'd like to see the septic system marked out on this map. Like to see the well marked out on this map. And I'd like to see the.
Oh, well, the Drapow's new well?
Your well.
Our, our well is right there by the shower. It's one foot in front of that shower. It's right tight against the building.
Are you planning on keeping that?
I plan on keeping it in that vicinity right there, yes.
It's gonna be a new one?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to see those items on this map. I'd also like to see a proposed, so we're seeing what's existing. I'd like to see the proposed. Cause it makes it a little easier for visualization when we're working with how far back from the water we're gonna be.
So you want me to draw that on a, on a map proposal? Of where the, where we're.
We can, we can give you a.
Well, this is what Dana did here would be great.
We can give you a list of, of what we'd like to see. Also, uh.
Thought I did a proposal.
Erosion and revegetation.
This is um, so this is what I did for a proposal. So I'm thirty feet. I did thirty feet. I measured thirty feet. What, what's he got us at? Thirty-one point six. So I was off by a foot, cause I wasn't sure of, of the exact high water. And then my septic, I have to have a holding tank right behind the camp. And then. The right away goes through here. It's a ten foot right away. So the septic can go back here with my parking.
Like from this right away to the back of this house? How far away is that?
He probably has the information already. And he has this, cause he just did it.
Yeah, because um, and I asked him to put the wells on there and I don't know why he didn't. I talked to him today and he says.
Yeah, unless we're encroaching on that.
Yeah, but we can't.
That's Jean's. So Jean's well's down here. My well is here. Her well is here, her existing.
Yeah, and they're moving their septic back here and.
Are they moving the building too when they rebuild or?
Yes, they're coming, they're sliding back.
They're pulling backward.
We should see the twenty-five foot line.
But really.
That's critical on this one.
We do need to see it, but really, like Jeremy just, he kinda pointed out, this distance here is almost the same as this distance here. So we're still at like. Probably twenty-five-ish.
Yeah, we're close. We just, we don't have the angle of it though, right?
No, I know. But there's not a whole lot of wiggle room. Yeah, it would be nice to see it, but there's not a whole lot of wiggle room, cause this is the right of way.
Yeah, there isn't.
So he's actually having his septic system. Across the street.
Just like everybody else has done out here.
There's not much, not much room for error there.
But it would be good too to see the existing, you know, it's in the same spot, but if we could see it shaded, so we could see the.
Where are you gonna park? You're, you're gonna park over here? So you're not gonna park here? Cause I'd rather see you slide back a little bit further. Because we could take up some of the space here if you're, if you don't need any parking here.
Well, yeah, that's where, yes.
And then you keep them with shed here or is the shed?
No, it's gonna go.
That's gonna go.
You must bring this down over here.
And that gets it out behind the hundred.
Yeah.
You mean fifty? Oh, it's a hundred from that, okay.
The hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think we could slide that house back a little bit.
Yeah.
Like at least ten or fifteen feet.
Think we should do a sidewalk on this one?
Yeah, I do.
That is the.
It's um.
Are you planning on keeping this deck in this location?
The front deck?
You're keeping them on the water side?
Yes.
Keep them on the water side?
Yeah.
And we also, we've started where we've actually physically measured them when we're on site, just to.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, so there's a little bit of grass area here, there's a pub, there's a pub from the right away to the back of the camp is about fifteen feet. So the right away.
Fifteen feet?
Yeah.
We'll have to measure it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's fifteen to, fifteen to eighteen feet.
And could we possibly, when we show up, see the house and see the right away?
Yeah.
Just a couple of flags here, so we know where.
Oh, you'll see it, you'll see it. You don't need any flags, you'll see it.
Cuz this was the one where it had grown wide, right, and they, wasn't one of these, it wasn't Drapo, but it was the other one, right?
Jean?
Yeah, the, the right away had gotten wider and they were proposing the, to move it and move it and re, get it back where it was supposed to be.
I think they were gonna revegetate some of it to make it more in line with what it was supposed to be.
Revegetate, yeah. It had just grown over time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we definitely need a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I would like the twenty five foot watermark marked out on here and location of your proposed septic. And I would like to see the shed, like where you want that.
And just clear what's being removed and what's.
So you want a twenty five foot high watermark?
Please.
Okay, I thought that, that, that's not the high watermark, okay, yeah.
He's, he gave us the blue for fifty.
Yep.
I think that dotted line is, but it's not actually the one he needed that way on this map.
That line is my four sixteen. But that's a, a, the height above the pond, above sea level.
The four sixteen.
I think that, yeah, I think that might end up where that twenty five foot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Waterline is.
Then we should have a clear what's being removed and what's being.
Erosion control.
Erosion control, reveget.
Revegetation.
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanna write this.
Yeah. So, um.
We can send you this by email, Jen can send you.
Yeah. So you want the twenty five foot high watermark, right? And then the vegetation, the um.
And just. Location of both wells, cuz right now it doesn't.
Okay, our well and the Drapos well?
The Drapo, so anything about the Drapos is the, since now the plan is approved, the new and approved, approved plan.
Okay.
So their septic move, so, okay, we wanna see where their new septic's gonna be in relation to where yours stuff is, things like that.
Right. Right.
Where their new house is gonna be.
Got no idea, I haven't seen.
Yeah, we just signed, we just signed, we just signed it.
Yeah, but Dana has all that.
So, so he has all that, so it should be super easy for him to just transpose it cuz he's.
Cuz he will, they're, they're working.
Okay, so I did just tell Dana what I need and go back and.
He should have all this info.
Yeah, and he'll just redo this map real quick with what we want, and then you just bring it back to us.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And we're gonna set up a sidewalk. When we're gonna do that? It's dark, like four thirty.
I know, it's dark. I know.
And.
Yeah.
And Saturdays and Sundays are not gonna work.
Yeah, no.
For me anyway, I don't know how your weekends have been, but I'm not gonna go to a sidewalk.
So I do work all weekend, come on.
Me too.
You know that.
Oh, come on.
How do you think I get so famous, Andy?
How you shoot it?
All the posters in the post office.
So what do you wanna do?
Try for, you wanna try for like a Friday afternoon? Or is Fridays too busy, or is that like a spa time or?
No, Thursday.
Maybe this people have to get ready for the weekend.
Thursday is the nail day, and that's next Thursday on the twelve.
You get you at the same time.
Ten A M.
Oh. It's not bad, not bad.
Jeremy's not as famous as me.
Oh, soon you're gonna hear, ow, what the? Can, can Friday work or?
Yeah, we can do Friday.
It's coming Friday?
Uh, out, the thirteenth?
Yeah, the thirteenth, yeah, it's Friday.
Um, you wanna try like three thirty?
On the thirteenth?
Friday the thirteenth?
At three thirty, or how about sixth, six o'clock, no.
No, or.
Three thirty.
No, I was almost thinking.
It's already dark.
Yeah, do I try like, how about two o'clock, I'll just shoot over.
How can you get out at two o'clock?
I won't, I'll go back, but I.
Okay.
It's, it's almost easier cuz I can finish my day.
Okay, as long as that works for everybody else.
Does that work? David?
Yeah.
Let's try that.
That is at.
Where was this one?
One twenty four.
One seventy four?
One twenty two.
One forty four?
One forty.
At two?
Yeah, let's try it.
Right.
Probably cold.
Oh.
Friday thirteenth at two o'clock?
See what I do.
That's Nicole's birthday.
And it's on a leak.
Yeah. It's the last one.
The second to last one.
And we'll wait, we'll be paying the doors. It's a killer on the road.
You're laughing, but we went, was that where we went, Andy, when we went down there, we found that creepy guy who was, where were we, was that happening?
Was it, yeah, it was on the lawn.
Oh, no, that was Sunfish.
That's Sunfish. That was Sunfish, that was one, yeah.
That was creepy, waking me.
It looked like he was robbing a house and.
Oh, and he was trying us over with his truck.
Yeah.
That was creepy. That was creepy.
Now, let's try that.
Yeah.
Alright, so you're gonna send me a list of.
Yeah.
Everything else, okay.
Let's check this one back.
I'll send it to you.
And Dana should run while we wanna see flag there.
Come to the.
Right, give you the information anyway.
Yeah, and I don't think he's full representative.
Joe put the, the flags out there for the septic, so those are there already, the Joe Noel put the flag.
Yeah, you'll wanna get a copy of that septic design.
Yeah, so the flags are out there, what he's, wants to do. Or um, and then you'll, all the other stuff again. Do I need to drop anything out, you want that application check tonight or bring it back or?
Um, you can do it at the sidewalk if you want.
Okay.
And, and then when the septic things start, you can just email.
Email it?
Yeah.
So weird.
I know, I'm just needing my work done for me.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Alright, thank you.
Have a good night, thank you, sir.
Have a pretty night, thank you.
We'll give it a try and see if it actually works.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, I'll just.
We'll see if Betty shows up.
Say what, that, that.
Alright, minutes?
I'll try, I gotta see, I didn't have a cloud that day, and I wouldn't drive Jen, she was laughing at my cloud. I'd like to go. Wouldn't I take one of those? I was actually, I mean, I was working, so.
Read my notes, don't scribble on it.
We have the copy to be signed, everything, it says copy taken, right over.
Okay. Alright, I'll put my pen away.
Oh, are you printing another one?
Yeah, no, it's fine, September twenty first meeting minutes? Doesn't mean I, that's, I got, right? Is there another one, Jen, that I lost?
I have August thirty first, December twenty one.
Did I lose it already?
Right here.
It's probably in the file, oh, look at that, stole it.
Are we gonna come back here after the sidewalk or wait till December?
Uh, wait till December.
Yeah.
It's my goal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Andy can't miss the rest of it.
Do you wanna see it on? Um, one hundred? Is that more people for bowing, do you wanna do just like walk the same way?
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, we could, yeah, that'd be great. It's almost the same piece of.
That's the John Hutchins one?
Yeah, it's almost the same piece of property.
That is. Genius idea.
That's why we keep her around.
Yeah.
Before we go through this, I have a question, did we ever really touch base on what the butters wanted for that solar? Like they were throwing out a whole bunch of stuff, but did we ever get clarification on that?
No, we didn't. Really love the building, and it's kinda.
How do you guys feel about that?
I'm always a fan of more input, so if they have. Concerns that can be addressed as part of the project, I mean, obviously. They have the right to do the project, but if they say, well, we just don't, you know, we don't like it, it's not gonna, it's not as nice as trees or something, okay? That's different than, hey, we wish there was a little more buffer between our land and this, or so, you know.
There was one that did feel that way, one woman who unfuted.
That was in fact, the Granias, right? Frides, uh, and Granias.
Yeah.
Frides and Granias were both concerned. And I, I, I think, I don't even have a problem if the board wants to invite them and say, well, is there something, if the project is approved, which it's.
It's setting that back.
Yeah, then, then is there some adjustments that could make it better for you?
Yeah, I'm not so sure that there is anything that would make it better for them.
But I think it's important to ask.
Yeah.
I agree, there may not be, but I think it's important to give them the opportunity. Um, you know, they came here, they had, we did the public hearing, but public hearing, to me, felt like it was more informational. And there wasn't enough time for them to really get into deep comment on it and what they thought, and so I think sort of almost.
We weren't anticipating.
Right, it's gonna turn out. So it's public hearing with anybody, I think, I think it'd be great to invite. The butters back and see if they have anything for a bit of add to the whole vote. And, and.
I think we should too.
Yeah. And I think we need to just let buyer, uh, boil whatever, know that it may not be voted on at the next meeting. But a lot of time, we might, we might, might be asking for more adjustments, who knows?
I think we should skip these minutes and go into talking about the solar project.
Yeah.
He's out there.
Cuz they are here.
But are we opening up a can of worms with this that, that's.
Yeah.
Get where I'm going?
Yes, I feel like they didn't get an opportunity to speak how they were feeling at that. Public hearing either. And I'm thinking of it as if it were my neighbor, and I had actual concerns. And I didn't have an adequate opportunity to speak, but at the same time, I know that my decision doesn't determine if it's approved, but if we can do something that make it a little bit more appealing.
And I think. I wouldn't even mind having a second one, if, call it a public hearing, right? And the reason I wouldn't mind having a second one is because the first one, again. I think there was so much, let me kind of explanation in the beginning, that it kind of deprived. The neighbors and butters and people that were concerned from having the full time to comment, cuz they were asking questions, well, what about this, what about this? It was more of a Q and A versus a public comment, and I think it's important to give them that opportunity, especially because we had to cut it off and leave, walk in here.
Yeah, we didn't even get to hear the rest of it.
Yeah, I think it's fair that we give them the opportunity to truly voice everything they need to say, and then.
I agree.
Has anyone called, has anyone called that asked any more questions?
Anything?
Yeah, any, any other questions, Jen, or emails, or?
No. I know that Chris at Septic Gate spoke in.
Yeah.
Couple people.
And I, and I get that, but he's also the applicant, and I think it's important for the board to hear. If we hadn't, didn't have to cut it off because we were, if we'd had it as an open public hearing, app, at a certain, with a time indiscriminate, you know, then it wouldn't have been an issue. But we had to literally stop and say, we're, we're leaving you, and I just think.
I think there's gonna be a point where you're gonna have to stop it anyway.
And we, and we may have to, we may say.
I think they could have gone on for many hours.
Sure, and we may say, everybody gets, you know, if, if you want us to.
Yeah, we get five minutes.
Bring it a little more into control this time.
And I don't think that we actually got any feedback on what they would like to see. I mean, we heard what they didn't want, like, oh my god, we're losing all of this hunting and the blueberry bushes and this and that. But realistically, the project's going to be approved, so what can we do to make you happy with it?
At least happier.
Be done, um, and is that even possible for us to do?
Well, and some of it is, you know, when seeing when he had to change the lines, cuz his survey was off today.
I think we've set in a precedent, we don't want that.
I'm just wondering, yeah, I mean. But I'm a little agreeing with Betty here, cuz what do we do with the, the Dana's, how you say their name, the elders or? Oh, no, you're right, cuz then every time.
Every time we, how long?
Some neighbor comes in and says, well, I don't want this to happen.
Right, now we gotta address it.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's not, it, yeah.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, that we didn't, and we could have probably improved the public hearing, the hearing, the process, we, we weren't prepared for what went on.
A, a large group.
A large group in trying to control it.
Well, and I think that's different than asking, what do you want?
Yeah.
So like this one right here, is like, there's two hundred and fifty two feet of wood buffer here.
I've never did.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I mean, this is a lot of.
On this one, who's this one, who's this a butter?
Uh, that is.
It's one of them.
Dana, Dana Murdo, is that, yeah, that's this one right here, right, we're looking at?
Yeah. So they have two hundred and fifty two feet of wood buffer, so really what could we, what could we do there?
Were they at it here, I thought it was the Frides.
I thought it was up here.
Yeah, that's the Frides.
But now we ended up with this additional. Cuz he's using this.
Right, he's moved, he's moved it in even more, right?
And I, I, I agree with the Andy and Betty, that, you know. I don't think we wanna get into the person, what do you want?
Right, I mean, that's just.
I know what you were trying to, it, that isn't what you think.
I wanna hear what, what their comment was, if they feel they didn't get the chance to comment, that's it.
Yes, right, not.
So the other person's here, so how far away is the badass?
But if somebody goes, well, I want you to move it, well, you know. They've met.
Then your neighbor could say, I don't want you to build your building, even though you're within the setbacks.
Right, and then let you put your garage there or your.
That's.
We could ask them what they want, but that doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
My experience in this town, that people are not afraid to speak their minds, and if they don't like something, they're sure gonna let somebody know, and they haven't done that. I'm just surprised that we, I'm surprised that we have not heard anything else about it, because you know, as well as I do, people don't like something, speak up.
Well, and then do we really wanna treat, I mean, there's so many questions here, do you wanna treat the applicant differently, simply because it's a different type of project than you would any other applicant, where you're inviting more and more an extra neighbor in to come and. Complain, that's not really fair to the applicant either.
No, or can we just put it on the next agenda for approval?
So what's out there is. Yeah, well, yeah, it should, it should be stated in advance.
That's our public. Right.
Yeah.
I mean, they were told, you know, you got any other questions, don't hesitate, can their information, they knew how to get in touch with me here, so if anybody did have any other.
And nobody reached out?
I definitely think when it comes time for approval, it should be on as potential approval.
Yeah.
On this night, not just, well, we're talking about it again.
Right, I would agree with that.
Yeah, me too.
Because then they're gonna go, well, you, we didn't even know you were.
You just pushed it through, yeah.
Yeah, then they'll be coming.
And I have no problem with a, you know. Fifteen minute session before a public comment, it's very, very limited, if somebody wants to speak for a minute or two, and they, whatever, that's fine. Kind of just as a additional, if somebody feels they were cut off last.
Next time we do a public hearing, we just got to be a little more prepared or?
Well, it's not due to COVID.
Right, yeah, we're out in the fire from a lot where.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, that's very true.
And that actually might have been better, that might have been harder than here.
Yeah, that was the biggest public hearing.
Yeah, I think it definitely should be on the agenda that it's.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Signals the intention. Cuz I mean, I, I mean, they've presented everything, right, I mean, this.
I mean, they beat that to the horse.
Yeah. Everything's here, I mean, they've achieved all the setbacks.
I mean, they could go on the site anytime, or ask when the next, when, when our next meeting is, and we're gonna hear from them, and they have not done that either. You know, if I was more interested in it, and I knew, I would look and say, well, when's the guy coming in again?
Right, and we told everybody to watch the agenda, but it said they didn't have any idea this was going on.
I was signing up for it.
Yeah, probably does make a good neighbor. So, the, as a public hearing, does it get advertised differently?
Yes.
To bless the.
We have to pay for and put it in the paper.
Yeah.
We could do, we could still send out a body notice.
Well, we already, right, we already did the public hearing lead, so we did there, but I don't have a problem with contacting the butters and saying, if you, if, if there's anything you wanna add, that you really didn't get over the other day, that's fine.
Will it change anything? Or would it just tie us up for an hour and a half listening to them complain about it?
Mm-hmm.
Because they don't want.
Which is not gonna change anything after, uh, anyway, is it?
Right? Right?
Mm-mm.
No, so that's, that's just like saying, come on in and tell us, but we don't, we're not doing anything about it anyway, that's why I think that's cool.
Right, and we have a public. Well, yeah, we did have the public hearing, and we have it on the agenda, that that's not right.
We can't do another public hearing, cause the applicant pays for that, they're paid for, it was a side of their budget.
And we have public participation.
Right.
No, that's not right.
It's not, right, yeah, we can't, yeah, we can't.
Make additional steps that no other applicant would have to do simply because it's a public hearing, that's not fair.
So you can't come out.
We don't. Yeah, fine, you know.
Yeah, yeah, just cause it's.
No, I say we just put it on the next agenda for potential approval.
And if you're here, and if you're here, right, you can ask to speak, right, you come to the, yeah.
They have a rule.
And, and.
A rule to public participation. Yep.
So do we bring it down to the end then, right before that, or?
Yep.
We could change public participation to, or, yeah, right at the end, actually. That's actually a great idea.
Just be the last thing we go through and.
Go to last one, eight, you know?
If anybody sticks around for it, then.
What's our agenda gonna look like next month?
I can't remember forty things.
Hundred and forty?
I'm concerned that COVID's gonna come into play again.
What is?
COVID, cause we're going through another spike, so I'm wondering.
It is.
Yeah, tell me about it.
It's gonna.
If we're gonna, is December gonna be our last meeting in person?
Our last meeting. Oh, can't we go the other way?
How were you doing before Zoom?
Yeah, it sucked.
It wasn't any fun. It was hard, it was.
People would talk, nobody would stay muted.
It was, it was hard, it was hard.
Yes, and you got too many.
Didn't figure out whether you were muted or not muted.
Right, and you almost need, uh.
I told you guys, hit the space bar when you want to, stay muted until you wanna speak.
I did it on my phone, so I, I didn't have any space bar.
Yeah.
Hit the space bar and speak.
But we also need, you know, we need to keep, the, when the last ones, we kept everybody muted.
So.
Cause we had so many people.
Hot sexy babe kept unmuting himself and.
Yeah.
I don't actually have a lot of anybody, it was only.
I would. It was only a full time.
So what are we gonna do?
It's always there keeping people muted.
Hot sexy guy, I kept like muting everybody, and he'd unmute himself, and he was the one making the most, oh my god.
Yeah.
Oh god, yeah.
Yeah, and then you'd have people that were there for later parts of the meeting, then they'd be, you know.
It was, yeah, it was. Then I started using rooms and started just throwing people out into separate room and then bringing them back. It was ridiculous, I don't know.
A lot of, a lot of other organizations, the same problem.
Oh, I don't know.
People, you, you tell someone to speak, they're not speaking, they, I think, they don't know if they're speaking, yeah, it, it's all been hard for everybody.
May, now I didn't ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, I, I sort of just, somewhat overheard what you guys are talking about. There are two, two projects, and it sounds like there's a lot of questions on one, but none on the other. Is there a reason to treat them differently in this process?
I don't think so.
Um, the McQuillis project, just none of the people that really came for the, for the public hearing were interested in that project, nor here today.
I don't think there's a reason to treat them differently, just because there's more or less people interested, I think we have to treat you fair and the same as any other applicant regardless.
Right, and there was, there was the one lady at the McQuillis property that was very interested.
Yeah. Sure, but I don't think it would be appropriate to say, well, we'll prove one, but the other one will give more time, I just don't think, I think we have to do right by the, the process, and the process needs to be clean for everybody, and no matter, just cause you have some butters that understandably don't want something in their backyard, is, is, I get that and I feel for them, but the same point, you, you know, the landowner has rights, rights are rights, and, you know, that's, we have, we don't have zoning ordinance and things in this town, so this is what you can do.
But I think we should have, we'd like to have it on the agenda for final approval.
Okay.
As an actual part of the agenda.
I think so.
For both, correct?
Yeah, for both, we'd have, bring both to him for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just wanted, and we just wanna put upfront that that's what the intention is before, yeah.
Sure, yeah, sorry, I thought today was a, a public hearing, public number two for folks to attend, but it sounds like not.
No, we don't typically have to.
No. We just do one.
Yeah, we, you know, when everybody was notified, did anybody reach out to you, Chris since?
Public hearing.
Other than Sewell?
Just Sewell, and I reached out to him, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and he'd asked to speak to you anyway after, didn't he?
Yeah, and he said, not my phone tonight, any reason that I need to be, and I said, you're more than welcome to attend, but I'm happy to take your call now, so.
No, I think I just make most of them, we add it to the agenda with the potential approval. For both items.
Second it?
Second.
Okay, with the term?
Yeah.
All right. We'll put you on the agenda for final approval.
Okay, when's your next meeting?
December.
December seventh?
Mm-hmm, hopefully.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Oh, I have, did I give you your receipts?
You wanna need Chris? Hey, Chris?
I have, um.
Jenna's on for it, I think.
I have.
Yeah.
I think he's still got some papers over here.
Oh, yeah, those are, uh, they're.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Plans?
All, all receipts for the, yep, 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 gotcha, great.
Yeah.
I guess that's mine too.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you, have a good night.
Yeah, do your thing.
Oh, question, I was reading over here, do we have a feedback from the Avery property holdings?
Not there still. They said what we had asked them to do, can I take a photo?
We had a moment. Right?
I haven't heard that, they said that they were set, they were just getting touch. So, the next meeting would be Chris. Then we have Dana with, um, our subdivision, John Hutchings, Marky Coe, Matt Heber.
Dorothy Herson.
Marky Coe, Dorothy Herson.
Yeah, we're gonna pop that one.
I'm having attention, are you telling us what's on the next agenda? I was reading. What did I miss? So the Byers.
Yeah.
Byers, Chris Byers.
Byers, Dana Byers.
Dana Hutchins.
Yep, Dorothy Herson.
Hyon.
Matt Heber. And Hyon was all set, wasn't it?
Uh, he, they were in no show.
No, no, Hyon, Hyon was here.
Yeah, Hyon?
Oh, okay, who was the?
Hyon has a, a little more work to do.
Hutchins is Hutchins.
Hyon just has to do their erosion.
Okay, yeah.
Revegetation.
Yeah, no, it was Dowling, that's no show.
It was, yeah, Dowling, Hutchins.
Hutchins, John Hutchins. Uh, Hyon, so Jeremy Bradshaw will be back.
Mel and, um, John.
Unfortunately.
For a site transfer.
They're regulars now.
Who's regulars?
Mel and Tom.
What are they coming back for?
Same plan for me.
Something to do.
For what?
Uh, for down the street, I believe.
Okay.
Oh, and that's the last meeting of the year, we gotta.
Anything on the Arborby Highway?
That's up to you, because when our previous chairman had a.
The addition, or, do you have?
Full Christmas party.
Our previous chairman, who is that?
A lot of parties.
Uh, she's famous.
Is that pathetic or?
Yeah, what is that?
I hear she's famous now.
They're both, they're famous too.
They're both, right? The one across from Dave's.
Too famous to be part of us.
Where the, he wanted to do.
It's true.
The one on industrial building?
Yeah, I wanted the survey and the well.
I'll never forget that.
They're building already?
No, no, I said, have you, have you heard back from them about the well and delineation?
You don't forget us, Beyonce?
No, so they said it's gonna take a while to do it, so don't touch base when they're all set to come back.
Yeah. Gotcha.
That's not the marijuana guy, is it?
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you know what we have to, um?
Oh, that, yeah, what we were thinking, are we thinking the same thing?
Yes.
Yeah. We need to discuss, hold on, let's get through these minutes, we can go into other business, cause I think. You already did?
We need a red pen?
No, I'm not, I'm not fixing grammar.
David, do register my.
You, that's my job, to be with it in October.
We always say, David, okay?
I crossed, I thought I crossed it off everybody's, so it could have.
Oh, okay, no, that's.
Yeah, interesting.
Not the, uh.
I like it, I like it, thank you.
Okay, so I put you here to kind of sort it out, maybe.
She really want me to trip and smack it, well, that's very good.
I want you to be safe.
So that's my question.
Summersworth, not Somerville.
Mr. Byers, B U Y E R S.
There we go, that's what we did, talk about what we can. Where did you find the correction, David, uh, which?
August thirty-first. It's the end of, uh, the solar projects. I've actually.
Oh, I see it.
There's actually two of them.
Okay, was that it?
That was it so far.
Oh, you didn't get through it, okay. Yeah, she did it in this one too.
Thank you.
Gifts from the wedding, all the gifts.
Are you doing it?
Keeps on, oh, you already gave me one, didn't you? The gift that keeps on giving?
These are the changes that I found, rumples of those.
Any others for the third first?
I got one more. I don't know if she noticed it or not. On the second page. Uh, Vice Chair O'Brien asked, Mr. Olds had any house plans, he did not have any with him. Stated it's the same design as another home road, which was recently improved.
Okay.
Maybe strike the road?
Or, is another home on the road?
Is this.
Yes, second paragraph down on page two.
As another home on the road?
As another home on the road?
On the road, yeah. Or on whatever street that is, through the show's road.
Either way.
The thirty-first?
Yeah. Second page.
Oh, okay. How is another home on the road was recently approved, that was the Kathy House.
Okay.
So however, he stated that it is the same design as another home on the road, on the same road?
That would work. That's all what that I noticed.
Anybody else for the thirty-first?
No, I give you a, a couple. You got it.
Yeah, you did.
The thirty-first, that can be signed, well, the twenty-first.
Anything for building oil yet?
None.
None?
Hmm, no, but their sign in New Hampshire over by the Cumberland Times is horrifically bright.
Oh, yeah, that is really, especially when it's raining out.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where is it?
Across from the Cumbies?
On the Milton Road?
Next to Dunk.
On the Milton Road?
Oh, I was thinking the East Rochester Cumbies.
And then just in Sturgis, Sturgis, I think, is one of those days you're.
I'm saying that I wasn't a member. Kind of like when I was here in Lebanon.
Yeah, it's just.
You don't, you.
I wasn't a member, I hadn't been sworn in as of then.
Oh, you, oh, you were just here.
Uh, the August thirty-first.
I don't know if you know that.
Uh, yeah, I just.
Did I name there?
Yeah.
My name is, but I was not sworn in by that time.
Good. Was there anything for the twenty-first?
I was appointed before then, but they hadn't sworn me in.
What, John? Yeah, I saw that.
Is there any questions for the twenty-first?
That's right, he, he was here, but it was like the next day or something, he got sworn in.
I don't think there was anything in that one, besides that one name change. I can't stand his mask.
Name change, where?
So David's issued it on the letter.
I'll talk to you about that in a second.
I read, I remember reading all those emails.
Yeah.
It is.
Once David's done, I'll update everybody.
So what do we do about the people that have come in looking for approval for something? And we know down water, what they're doing business. And we're, without our approval.
Are you referring to something particular?
I am.
Same thing, I'm probably thinking of.
What?
Well, on this letter that I just.
Okay, that's on, that's on, that's on, that's on.
Casto.
I mean, it's, I, I just think. I can't remember the name of the place down there. The place with the garages, right?
Yeah.
They grow, they wanna grow marijuana there.
Oh.
Right, well, we know they're growing marijuana, they, could you see the flights?
Yeah, they already did a change, they just didn't go for a change of use, but they did change from industrial to.
But, they didn't complete the process, did they?
The, so stack that.
Oh.
So they came to us asking, can we do the addition? And we said, we need more info on that, but they never, they should have come for a change of use.
They haven't made. They should have.
Now, where was this building? This was the one I missed.
Give them plenty of rest, start growing.
Uh, when, as soon as he purchased it.
Blind.
It was this year.
Yeah.
What, now where was his building? I missed that one, that was the meeting.
That's the seven brown, the seventy May Brown Industrial.
A red one.
Oh, okay, yep, all right, now.
But they should have got a change of use, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
And that wasn't.
So the only thing that we could do is get this sent up. So the only thing that we could do is get this send up violation. That's it.
I mean, did he just say?
The problem is, he said, he said he was given a permit because it didn't change use, it was still rental. Well, in that case, I can rent a restaurant, I can rent a Walmart, I can rent an auto mechanic. I mean, no, it's whether or not it's it's.
Doesn't matter what he.
I think we should set the precedent right up front like a dozen, no.
And we already have first, we did that with hometown home. Right, when they changed to the.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, the doggy daycare and stuff.
Yeah.
We've already.
That's something different now, you know?
Oh, is it?
They put Alpha Dog Rescue in there, Liz meals over there.
Yeah, I think, I think they take dogs in there now.
But that wasn't what we had.
That's not really a change of use, is it?
Well, some of the ways.
It's approved.
Well, that's true.
I mean, I didn't hear this one, but I mean.
You didn't hear what one?
It's such that.
He, yeah, he was, he was here for that one.
That's what it's.
Yeah, I know, I know this one.
Okay. So, alright, so talking about this Andy again.
For this one.
She got another um violation.
Yeah.
Because somebody was seeing like a ton of vehicles there and the code enforcement officer went over. I think this, you guys are reading her response from her attorney.
Mm-hmm.
Where if you look at the very last paragraph. He references that the added traffic is because she's running four other businesses from the property.
Mm-hmm.
Problem is, she just bought the property in twenty nineteen and the site plan review ordinance came in effect in twenty eighteen. So they neglected to tell us at her site plan review that she was running other businesses there, which I feel would have changed what we determined.
Yeah.
Because part of our approval process is determining access and parking and whatever. So I think that she needs to come back to site plan review and we need to hear each business that's there.
Each business.
Because her attorney just clearly said she's running four businesses at the property.
Do, does the board have the, no, I don't know whether it would be appropriate in this case or not, but does the board have the authority or is this a question that needs to be asked of council to reneg? When we found out we were not given the information correct, full information to reneg our approval?
I think that we can send her a notice of violation that she needs to come before the planning board because she omitted information which would have been pertinent in us determining her site plan review.
Definitely in the cars, the park, yeah.
Yeah, we, we approved something, but we weren't, if we approved something, but we weren't told the information correct.
Told the whole truth.
We were given false information and that's just not, not okay.
Yeah, she does, she can maximize two vehicles there at any time, right?
Yeah, quite honestly, each business she runs has, each of them have to come for site plan review.
I'm giving them up.
I agree.
Not just the one.
We're gonna do it, everybody, that's, I mean, I just don't like the ordinance, but it's there.
You know, the ordinance, a lot of people don't like the ordinance because they don't understand that they were just ordinances that already existed that were compiled into one spot for us, so it's a little easier. Otherwise, we were struggling to find that information.
And stuff wasn't coming in front of us either.
Right, um.
Oh, it's here, so it doesn't matter, I mean, that's if the people voted, that's what it's.
Yeah. That's what it is, so I think.
So I think that we need, that's my thought on that.
Now, is that something David handles or?
Well, but, but, but I, I don't, and here's the other question.
Yeah.
Cause if we say, okay, we think you need to come before the board because you did a change of use without talking to us or you did something. What about when you go back to the other case that we were just talking about? When the electrician guy said, oh, I was, I was given the permit and told it was okay. And that you might have got a building permit, but it doesn't mean you can operate, you know, you're still in violation of the ordinance if you didn't come before the board.
Correct.
So I don't know that that should be our enforcement, I mean, he's code enforcement, I hundred percent respect that. But I'm saying, if we have an issue, code enforcement is different than planning board, I think planning board should send a letter saying you need to come before the board because you're possibly in violation of.
But who, my question, I guess who enforces that?
You do. Boss man.
Well, and then, but then the question would be, what happens if they refuse?
To come, yeah.
My suggestion would be, it goes to.
Then we turn it over to selectmen.
We turn it over to the selectmen, ask if they choose to employ legal counsel or not, end of story.
Should that, should that letter be copied to the selectmen when it's sent anyway?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, cause this seems to be a common theme all of a sudden.
I find it.
Well, and it's gonna pop up a lot more, so we ought to get, you, I think there's a ton of things that just start up and do their thing and I think we I think if, if we're gonna enforce one, we're gonna enforce them all when we know about them, so we gotta be uniform about it.
But when, I think you're right, we don't even know when these other businesses began. But it's funny, that, that post was there and nothing was happening and now, all of a sudden.
All of a sudden. But I mean, we didn't have to do any research on this one, I mean.
No, they, they can't. Well, and the same thing with the other one, they came and handed us, hey, guess what I'm doing, that's, you know, okay, well.
But I mean, do we know they're running that out of there? I mean, without, he said he is.
Well.
Oh, he's doing.
He said he already is, yeah.
Yeah, he said he, they're rented though, they're not his, right?
It doesn't matter.
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
So he's, so his argument was it wasn't a change of use because it was so rental.
Yes.
Rental, yeah, but rental is, you know, if I rent a.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I.
Gun shop, daycare.
Cause we've already. Cause we've all rentals. And we've already done this.
Yeah, otherwise everybody in the world will do rental.
With the mobile, we've done with now.
Don't condolment, yeah.
So, yeah, no, you're right, but how many, like, what are we talking about? What's going on in that building, for real?
Right, I mean.
In Browns?
Yeah.
It's a grow.
Yeah.
Yeah, how many?
Looks like.
Well, I, I don't know that, I don't, we, we can ask that information when it comes, but I think we.
And is it all grow or does he have multiple different businesses there because?
No, it's gonna all be grow, it either, he, he, he didn't as much as admit, but he basically said, no, this is basically all gonna be grow because that's what.
But he didn't say the same person was gonna rent all the places, so.
Yeah, and I'll, and he can rent them out to anybody and keep it for himself, who cares?
Yeah, but we need to find out the business owner, because that's who has to come to site plan review with written permission from their landlord.
Oh, yeah.
It's not the, it's not the property owner, it's the, it's the renter.
The renter.
And, and I got a question, this one's clear because we have a letter, but how did, where does it go from hearsay to?
They'd have to, they'd have to bear the burden of proof to tell us when they opened that business and show some sort of proof.
Yeah.
I think what, I think the precedent is when you come to the board and tell them you're opening, you're running a business.
But you're, I'm, I'm asking because I mean, it's not, we're not enforcement, right?
No, I don't want us driving around looking to wonder who this is going, yeah, but these two people that we're talking about have come to the board and said, I'm doing this and we know it's different than what was allowed out of it, so end up.
You come here, so, I mean, this one's clear as day, we have a letter.
And he said it too, I mean, we can review the tape, but I think it's one of those where you come to the board.
I wasn't here for that one, so.
You come to the board and wave your hand saying, hey, I'm violating the ordinance, then where are we mess if we don't enforce it?
I think it bothers me is the people that come in.
Right, and he just have to determine when the timeframe was when they opened that too.
Opened before the ordinance.
I'll look up the deeds. I'll.
Before it or after?
The marijuana ones. Right before it.
Mm-hmm. I think it bothers me is the people that don't tell us the whole story. They come in and they transfer it around the story. And then, or they just come in and then they go away and we're like, what happened to it? What's going on with this property? And you see at work, you, you see this, it's obviously in business, but they never came back, how many of those have we seen?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's like, what happened to that?
How many houses have we seen be built?
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's really.
A lot of the things that people have said, you know, and then just happen.
Like mansions on water, but you didn't approve.
Yeah, and stuff just appears after.
It suddenly appears, right, and I, I just, that's the part that really bothers me.
Well, there should be some synergy between planning and code.
That was spinning on wheels from nothing.
Yeah. I don't know, guys, I think yes, on Browns, but we need to find more information on that because he did admit to us that he's running grows out of there, so we needed to find out who's running the grow, when they open that, in conjunction with when site plan review ordinance came into. If they can prove to us that they were running that operation prior to site plan review, then there's nothing we can do.
They weren't because they just bought it.
Right.
Well, and then the question would be, who was running the, what, where, you know, what, did, did Brown rent to somebody in there twenty seventeen?
Right, the same.
But does that come under code to review what we approved and what was approved and then to issue a violation letter like this? Then it comes to us.
So unfortunately, I think you're sending a letter for this.
Which is fine in this scenario because we have the information.
Correct, right.
And I think, I mean, it's clearly stated right here. I think, but what I'm saying is down there.
I think we ought to send a letter of question, can you please answer the following questions? And I think it should come from the board, not from code, but, because if he was given a permit, he was given a permit, but.
And what was he given a permit for?
Well.
He didn't get a permit.
That's.
Oh, so you're saying he was told not to, he didn't even need one?
Doesn't have a permit, right?
He doesn't have a building permit for any, for any changes inside or anything, no.
For any changes inside or anything. So no plumbing for any of the water going in there, nothing, no permits, okay.
And we talked about the fire, the fire chief going in there because of.
So I mean, that seems like something.
I think we have to refer to code first.
Yeah, I mean, that seems like David should issue a letter, right?
You just really wanna pass that buck off to him?
No, no, I just, no, my, my thing is, where, where do we stand with enforcement? I mean, that's not our.
I don't know, where do we stand with enforcement on fines for subdivisions?
That was.
We enforce that too.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, that was recommended, right, to be voted on. Right, I mean, we didn't initiate that, that's what I'm saying, I mean, to handle this, like here with the letter for the board saying this. So David issued a letter there, you know, then we have that. We had with the stuff on Heathrow, that was recommended by legal because of, remember it was advertised prior to approval.
Right.
So we also had something initiated there, we weren't out investigating, that's what I meant.
Was it brought to the board?
Yes, it was brought to the board.
It's because you can't advertise, take reservations until you have approvals and continue to advertise them.
No, until it's brought, absolutely.
And we, and he was warned and then it continued.
And he took reservations.
So then it was recommended to come back to us and issue a penalty.
How much did he get fined for? I was, I stepped out of that.
Yeah, I think it was three.
Four, five hundred bucks?
I thought it was a thousand.
It was three thousand.
Three thousand.
It was half of whatever they.
That was the first fine we ever issued.
But it was half of whatever. Yeah, it was half of the, what the board recommended. No, I'm kinda, I'm asking, no.
I don't know, Andy.
Neither do I, I mean, I agree with everything you're saying, I'm just asking, where do we stand on?
For Condi or for?
Condi, I think.
I think it's super easy, yeah.
Yeah, Condi, we need to write.
On the other one, I think, again, he came here and he said. This is what he's doing, so we ought to ask the questions that we're, when did this start?
Can you please tell us when this started at this, at this location? But does that letter go to David or does it go directly?
We're doing a follow up.
No, I think.
We're doing a follow up, that's all we're doing.
Yeah, he, he came to us, we have to ask more.
We're saying to us, Lord.
Okay.
Right?
That's. No, I, I agree. Cause, cause we don't know that he's in violation of anything, right?
Right.
So we're not, we're not asking for it to be violated, we just wanna know, please give us the following information.
And we don't wanna keep this stuff open forever.
No, no, I agree, we just.
Right. So I think that that's a way to, oh.
And if they fail to respond, then we refer to code.
Okay.
Or to the board of selectmen. Because I can envision several times, several people getting a letter going, hey, I'm ignoring that one.
Right, yeah.
Well, yeah, they're gonna ignore it four times before they.
Right, is this something we've ever done, Jack?
What?
Issued a letter like this?
What to?
To a, to a landowner or a business owner or anything that, you know, requesting more information that we feel you've.
Yeah.
They collect, they tell us.
No, we, I, we haven't, I'm talking board, yeah.
And again, the only reason I'm even considering.
But we definitely could.
Okay, that's, that's where, that's where.
The only reason I even think of saying. Is because he came here and said, I don't wanna be us up and driving around hunting, we, that's not our job.
No, I, I.
No, we, yeah. But if someone comes here and stands up and says, hey, I violated something, then if we don't follow up, we're, yeah.
I think whoever missed, at that point, we, we don't want this stuff hanging over us because eventually we'll be the people that should have followed it up.
Right, so I get, no, no, and I agree, I think my question is more, how do, where does our letter go? Well, there's just.
Yeah. Where do we go about it?
Yeah, how do we go about it?
Do you think we should tell the select, right, copy the selectmen or something before we do?
I'll write something.
Okay.
Can you send that to everybody, John, and not just me and Andy?
So they're not, not, not knowing?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're gonna, and you're gonna render it for this one too?
So that can all kind of. Just so everybody can give their input and not just the two of us.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody pick a different color and.
You're talking about the can of worms or?
I know, that's, that's.
About to open, we've been saying this about every single.
Everything we approve or disapprove or, I mean, this is an ongoing battle, but.
I think, I think we were correct in what we okayed. That was fine on that, on this one.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's all on.
Yeah.
Them.
So that was, this is good, what about the other three?
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, I, I mean.
I have no problem with that one.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Do we have a problem with that one, knowing that there's four other, we don't know the traffic?
Well, it could have affected, you're right, it could have affected if, if, yeah, if you had gotten approvals for all four, as you're supposed to, we may, we may have changed what we would have approved on.
Right.
Yeah, especially parking.
Parking, yeah, access.
Tyler Burman, Tyler, not a place to park on the side of the road.
Then you have employees and doesn't that work, something else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
A whole different, yeah, I think, yeah.
What we approved was fine, it was just where it's going now.
She's got so much business, she had to get a porta potty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that was for the people living in the house, right?
That just sounds like a whole bunch of people, whatever, I'm sorry, I don't care how many people you have living in the house, you're not going out to the porta potty.
You don't have one in your house.
I'm sorry, I only have one bathroom, we don't have a porta potty.
Yeah, that doesn't pass the smell test.
I don't know, that sounds really, I don't know.
On that.
I'm not policing that one, I'm not out there like.
He's gonna go do the.
You see him in the proper account, make sure Jen volunteered already, so it's fine.
Okay, so.
I'll write the letter.
Show me the letter.
Alright.
Alright, that's a bit fun.
Yeah, it's a bit fun, is anybody, I started to look at this and I.
Yeah, I don't really care what they do, I know that we're supposed to be in conjunction, but I really don't care. I think we should just let the conservation committee handle it and.
Yeah, I know, I'll try, I'll try to sign up for the Zoom meeting, just.
Good luck.
Here we go, just so we're, you know, we can take, as I.
Yeah.
I gotta remember to do that.
I told them this when they came too. They can just, they can just take the lead on that.
And just keep you updated?
I want to hear an update.
I'll make myself a note too.
To go into that Zoom?
Yeah, and just listen.
Just please mute yourself.
Just leave it on, I'll send your email.
I will. It might be, you never know, might be more entertaining than our meetings.
What could be more entertaining than our meeting?
Nothing.
No comment again, now that I think about it.
Okay, moving on, you'll get into that subdivision names, who wants to talk about that? I do, I don't really care what we call subdivisions.
Yeah, I'm just.
I don't really care if we have six that say Pine Cone Estates because we don't call them by their names, so, anybody have anything to add?
No, is there something in that regulations that they have to have a name that's different or?
I don't care if they put a number on the. Yeah, neither do I, I mean, I can't figure it out either. And I mean, we had a fifteen man conversation with Davis.
Always.
Is it in writing?
How I've been told and how it's always been done, try not, and same thing with the roads.
Roads is E nine one one and all that.
Well, yeah, nobody, for.
For subdivision.
I live, I live at the Schoolhouse Farms subdivision. Nobody says that.
Um, but if there's, I, I, I would say that if, if there's no intention of having any kind of, any kind of public signage that would call attention to it.
Right.
That makes people think they're going to this part of town or whatever, then, then they can pick any name they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say don't have like a complete duplicate, but if two of them start with pine, like, if you have Pine Hill Estates and Pine Cone Acres, I think that's okay.
And where did this all start anyway, is it a?
Because we're running out of subdivision names that have anything to do with nature.
But, but. But I mean, but I mean, none of them have a big sign out front telling you that, that, you know, this is Pine Cone Estates.
No, no.
None.
Okay.
I think that's only for our benefit anyway.
Fine.
In the, in the creation of it?
Yeah, just so we know which folder to pull up. I'm, I'm oversimplifying.
Yeah, you're probably right.
I think.
I mean, I'm all the favor making.
I think like, I don't care.
I agree.
Want those?
Yep.
Oh, I missed one, there's one right here.
Yep.
Yeah, it seems like a lot of work, yeah, and Dana has to keep making title pages.
I mean, they've got file numbers of good everything on these anyway, that we know they're different than what, I don't even care.
I can't, I can't remember, yeah, I don't remember.
Well, I would say let's not have the exact same name, but I mean.
Same name, but, but then, then, yeah, but then what do we do? Go researching for, twenty years from now, what does someone do? Go research to, you know, the planning board has to figure out what somebody applied for.
We're gonna have to get better names, like Loma Linda, like my bar.
I think every name ought to include the owner, every subdivision.
Well, you can't do it Loma Linda again, it's a, it's.
Instead of, you know, it's Pine Estates by Joe Blow. Whatever.
How about we just utilize the street name that it's on?
How about I don't care what they're naming it? I agree. What if you have three subdivisions on one road? Yeah.
Okay, we don't care about the names, okay?
Moving on.
A lot of Jen worry about the names.
We really, we really don't.
We don't.
And it's okay if we have duplicates because nobody uses them, so.
What else do we have on this?
Probably participation.
It may have.
We do the nine one one.
Yeah, but the E nine one one doesn't even have anything to do with.
The E nine one one, yeah.
That's a different. That's a different animal.
It may have something to do with that.
Because even like Maple, Maple Estates, they didn't even name one of those roads, Maple anything, right?
No, it's Maple Estates in Birch, it's called North Ridge.
It's Spring Hill, yeah, so.
That's supposed to be North Ridge.
Well, there you go.
That's a, that's a classy name, North Ridge.
That was a big. Whatever.
Alright, anybody got anything else?
I think.
Alright, motion?
Make a motion to end this meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, all in favor? I think we're done.
You're big fan.
Yeah.